Alright, so we are live, right Ryan?
Should be good to go.
Okay. So I'm going to call the meeting to order and if people just not talk till calling you or if it comes up rather than muting everybody, I think if we start getting interference, we'll mute people and then let you speak as it comes up. But this is John Goldrosen, the ZBA Chairman. This is the meeting of July 13th. The meeting is being recorded and so to start with, I want to just, as is required by the rules for these remote participation meetings, I'm just gonna ask the members of the board who are here, I'll state the name and if you just acknowledge that you're present. Steve Cacciatore?
Present.
James Chandler?
Present.
Wayne Andrews?
Present.
Richard Blaz?
Here.
And myself, John Goldrosen. I note we also have Bob Curran, the Building Inspector, is here. And Carol O'Brien, our Secretary, is here along with Ryan Tully from the Cable Services is here, thank you for your help. Can I ask, well, let me, I'll call the first case and then we'll ask those who are here for that case to identify themselves as well.
Real quick, is Rosanna Warwick, is she part of the first case?
Well, admit her and we'll find out. Not a board member, but you know, let's just let everyone in. Alright, this is case number seven. Location of property, Five Wild Turkey Lane. Type of district, Residence A2. Type of structure, Existing dwelling, Proposed dwelling and in-law. Owner's name, Paul and Janet Arnstein. Owner's address, Five Wild Turkey Lane, Whitman. When did you acquire the property, April 21st, 2017? Has application been filed with Town Clerk, yes? Has any previous appeal been made, no? Section of bylaw of which relief is requested? Section 6, 6-6, Special Permit for Accessory Apartments Within Single Family Home and Varian Section 6, 6-5? Reason for asking relief? Proposed use is allowed by special permit to allow family members to occupy the residence of another family member. A variance for sidelined setback is required to allow expansion of garage addition. Based on the lot, in a budding lot, this would not be a detriment to the public good. This case was advertised in the Whitman-Hanson Express on June 25th and July 2nd. Sitting on the case will be Mr. Cacciatore, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Andrews, Mr. Blaz, and myself, John Goldrosen. At this time, we'll have the reading of the list of abutters. Mr. Blaz, do you have that in front of you? Are you able to do it?
I got it right here.
Okay?
I got it right here. Okay. I do have to put my glasses on. Okay. So following is a list of parties of interest in accordance with the requirements of the State Zoning Act for the property located at Five Wild Turkey Lane, Book 48336, Page 237. Michael C. Metzger and Victoria Fahey, Lisa Trudell, Ellis Trust, Shane Troop, J.K. Donovan Trust, Jerick and Rosanna Warwick, and Fung and Carissa Ho, Robert and Kathleen Murphy, John Ellis III, and Tara M. O'Brien Ellis, Abeneiz, Anichie Ibe, and Prince Jermaine Charles, Oliver Onskow, and Ashley Ruthier.
Thank you, Mr. Blaz. Can I, I'm just going to call out the names of the other people that I see here and just see if everyone here of those folks are here for this case. Paul Arnstein, you're here for this case, right?
Yes, sir.
John Kelly?
Yes, sir.
Prince Charles? Charles, can you hear us?
He is on the list of abutters, John.
Yeah. Okay, you hear us, alright? And Rosanna Warwick, are you attending to participate in this case? She muted. Warwick, can you unmute? Can you hear us now, Rosanna?
Mr. Chairman, she has something on the computer saying, "Yes, she's here."
Okay, alright. And you're here for this case? Is that on the chat screen?
It says she, my microphone's having-
Okay, yeah, I see that. My microphone's having issues, yes, I'm an abutter. Alright, would I ask all, I'm going to ask all of you who are participating in this matter, other than the board members, if you would raise your right hand. If you saw me clear of the evidence you're showing, given this matter, should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, alright, you do at least one in. Alright, let me, I'm going to now try to bring up these case documents, particularly the plan. That's the application, here's the plan, let me just see, and I think the rest is just the abutters list. Well, we also have a letter from Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services. So, for those of you, I'm sorry if, I don't know how to turn that around, or if it's even possible, so, but there we are. For those of you who are here as abutters, the procedure is, we do as close as we can to a live hearing. We'll let the applicant or its representative explain what is proposed. I'll read the letter from the Fire Department into the record. We'll then have questions from members of the zoning board, and we'll then ask for questions or comments from members of the public. So, is it Arnstein or Arnstein?
It's Arnstein, sir.
Okay. Mr. Arnstein, are you presenting this, or is Mr. Kelly who wishes to speak on this?
I think it would be easier if John Kelly presented, he knows the measurements and whatnot from the plan.
Okay, so Mr. Kelly, why don't you go ahead and Mr. Arnstein can add anything that he wants to.
Yes, it's basically from the existing two-bay garage. We would, you could say, two-foot setback from the front of the property, and it would go back approximately 34 feet, and then return 12 feet, and then back 10 feet into the existing garage. And then we would build on top of the garage, and then above the two-bay garage that is existing on the property. So it would be basically an L-shaped addition.
That's, but I'm just kind of going over with my cursor here.
Yeah.
So just to clarify, if I did, I think it can help if I jump in here, the, you do not currently have an in-law, right?
That's current.
Okay, I was a little uncertain when I looked at it because the, it says existing garage in-law above, but that's where you're going to put the in-law?
Correct. That would be a-
Okay. And so what is the, so the only new thing is this addition, what's labeled as Proposed Garage In-Law, that's the only new structure that's being added, correct?
Yes, it's gonna be basically a two, we'll be able to, we'll be able to put two vehicles in that garage space, and then we'll build above that, and then over the existing two-bay garage.
Okay. So currently, the existing garage is just a one-story garage?
Correct.
Alright, so you're building, you're gonna build out above that existing garage? And then you're putting an addition next to it, and that'll also be, become essentially two stories with more garage space on the first floor, and it'll tie into the in-law above the existing garage?
Yes.
Okay. And tell us how much, how many bedrooms and how many rooms are in the existing house, and how, what will be in the in-law apartment?
Okay, in the current home, there's three bedrooms, there is two and a half baths, there is a TV room, a kitchen, a front dining room, and like a front living room we use as a toy room for our current, for our daughter. And we have an office upstairs as well. And a full basement, it's not finished, and a full attic, not finished. And the proposed addition would have one bedroom, one bath, a kitchen with a dinette set, and a TV, a parlor, a TV room.
Alright. And the other question I'll ask, because I'm sure it will come up from members of the board, is the need for the, the addition is what causes the need for the variance. Without the addition, the side addition there, you wouldn't need a variance. So, why is that necessary? Why could you not just put the in-law, build up above the existing garage and put the in-law in there even if it was a bit smaller?
Without adding that, without adding that addition that you see?
Right.
It would just be too small, with not enough width for the-
Okay.
I believe it would be 26 foot by 26 foot.
That's exactly what I was going to ask.
Right. But because we would like to add that addition, it would obviously give us a little bit more for the livable space.
Okay. Also, I'll ask, what is the, what is the access, how do you access, how would you access the in-law apartment?
We would have, we would have an exterior stairway on the side of the home, towards the rear of the addition. And then we would have the second means of egress going in from the garage, going up to, from the garage, up to the livable space.
Alright. Okay, let me, Mr. Curran, I'll just ask you, any comments or anything further that the board should know?
Typically, John, there's required to be an entrance into the in-law from inside the existing home. That may be an issue that we need to solve.
We could certainly, we had discussed that, I was unaware of that, Bob. We have a closet that is off of our garage, we could put a stairwell where that current closet is, they would be able to, I mean, obviously, it's something an engineer has designed, but it's certainly possible.
Yeah, and I think if you make that a condition of approval, John, that's important to keep in line with what our bylaw says.
Okay. And there are no additional doors on the front of the, well, the front of the addition is going to be an extra, another garage, right? There'll be, I assume, a garage door for the addition, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so there won't be any additional occupancy doors, shall we say?
No.
Which is important to us, because we wanted to maintain the appearance of a single family dwelling.
Yes.
And my last question, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, so when you're, when you're looking at the front of the home, we would incorporate a door that would match the existing two-bay garage door, so it would be uniform.
Okay. And finally, what family member is this for?
This is for Jeanne-
Sorry, John, go ahead.
I'm sorry, it's for my wife Joan and I. Paul Arnstein is our son-in-law, and his wife Janet is our daughter.
Okay, alright. Alright, let me go out to, let's see, I do have one letter to read, and then we'll go out to members of the board for comments. This is from the Fire Department. I am in receipt of the request for the proposed, for these two addresses. This is both 43 Diane Terrace, which we dealt with last time, and Five Wild Turkey Lane, and have no objections, provided both homes are brought up to current smoke detection and carbon monoxide detection regulations. Sincerely, Timothy Grenow, Fire Chief. Let me go back to, there we are. Okay, let me go to members of the board for their comments and questions. Mr. Andrews?
The only question I have, I'm a little confused. You have an existing two-car garage, if I remember right, and the in-law's gonna be above that. Then you want to add an addition on the left side of that garage. Is that gonna be a one-car addition, or two-car addition?
Sorry. Two-car.
They'd have to park, you know, parallel, if they pulled in.
I was gonna say, it looks awful narrow for a two-car garage.
Yeah, they'd have to pull bumper to bumper, effectively, sir. It's more so if there's, you know, if there was a storm or something coming, and we wanted to get both the vehicles into the garage.
Alright. And you can continue to keep the existing garage as a garage, is that correct?
That's correct, sir, oh yes. Gotta keep my, you know, my car covered away from the snow as well.
Now, I think you already said this, but in-law is also gonna go through the new garage, is that correct? It's gonna be expanded above the new garage section too?
Yes, sir, correct.
And you're going to have an exterior door, did you say, at the back of the new addition?
Yes. Yes, right on, right on the left side of the addition would be a stairway.
Because as the chairman explained, the house has to continue to look as a single family home. That's the only question we had, Mr. Chairman.
Alright. And I'm putting my cursor, is that the stairway there that you're proposing?
Um, no, it's actually, it would actually be on the left-hand side, if you're facing the front of the hall on the new addition, it would be almost right where the writing is.
So it'd be alongside the addition?
Yes, towards the rear of the addition, yes. Right there.
Alright. And what, so it would be like attached to the, it would run alongside the addition, it wouldn't be perpendicular to the addition, or would it run alongside the addition?
It would run alongside the addition.
Yeah. That's a little bit of a concern, because that makes it more like, well, I'm just thinking out loud that that makes it a little less like a, a little more like a two-family and less like a one-family. Is that, is that stairway necessary?
I'm not sure, but it doesn't have to be there. Mr. Chairman, it doesn't necessarily need to be there, I mean, we want to conform with whatever the expectations are, so if it needs to be placed at the rear of the home, or, you know, we just, we want to conform with whatever needed, sir.
Yeah. I think it'd be better at the rear, both in terms of what, you know, looks like, but also, I'm thinking in terms of your setback requirements, the stairway, if it's attached to it, would count as, it would count as part of the structure, so I'm not sure what the measurements are, you know, in that area, but it starts getting you a little closer to the side lot line.
Right.
You know, probably not as close as where you are up front, but nonetheless, that's, we'll see what the other members of the board, how they feel, but that would be my reaction. Alright, let me move on, Mr. Cacciatore? Any questions or comments?
I'm looking at this, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, why can't they put the addition in the back of the garage and extend the garage so it's deeper, so they can, cause that way? And then it won't look, they don't need the side, the set side, they don't need anything, they just build out back. They don't need variance, they don't need anything.
I'm sorry, Steve, I didn't, you broke up on us.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, could you repeat it, Steve?
I don't see why that addition can't be added to the back of the garage. Make the garage longer that way, and then they can add the cars that, in there. And then we'll give them a better space, and then we wouldn't need any variances at all.
Well, the two-bay garage that exists right now is Paul and Jenny's garage, so, I don't- Are you saying we share their garage?
Yes. Why can't they share a garage? You're gonna share a house.
We really didn't want to go that route, if at all possible.
John, I'm not hearing you too well.
We really didn't want to go, we didn't even consider that, we really didn't want to, we haven't considered it. We just didn't want to-
Roll it out, yeah.
We just didn't want to impose on their property as much as possible.
That's just a thought, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Cacciatore?
Well, I'm just looking at it as, to maintain that one-house look, you know?
Yeah. Alright, Mr. Chandler? Excuse me, before we go further, we're getting, we're getting, excuse me, Mr. Chandler, we're getting noise from somebody, maybe rustling papers or something, so if, I don't want to, I don't want to have to mute everybody, so if you just, see if it's you. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Chandler.
I have no paper in my handwriting. Actually, just back to the fact I- Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, Mr. Chandler, we're not hearing you well.
Oh, no, is that working better?
That's a bit better, so just speak up and we'll see how it goes.
Yes. Okay, well anyways, looking at this, I'm gonna, the members, I wanna try to maintain the look of a single-family residence, of course, and I'm, it's hard to see, but I'm wondering why the, we cannot get around and maybe move that addition on the side to the back, or alter it in some way where it doesn't come so close to the side lot. I don't know if you got that at all?
Yeah, I think that was, we heard that, so that's somewhat like what Mr. Cacciatore was suggesting?
Yes.
Okay. Anything further?
No, that's all I have at this time, thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Blaz?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm not opposed in what he's, what he's, what he's asking for, I'm just curious why he wouldn't do it that way and then have no issues at all.
Alright.
Mr. Chairman, this is Bob Curran.
Yes.
John, the question I have is, it shows in the back of the existing garage, a proposed porch, and it shows a stairway on that. I'm just concerned, I'm just wondering what that is all about. Mr. Kelly?
And Mr. Arnstein?
Yeah, I mean, it was maybe just a suggestion or a thought to put a deck back there.
Yeah, so-
Not something that we're beholden to, we are more than-
If you put, if you put a deck back there, then you have a set of stairs off it, you don't need another means of egress.
Sure.
So that will, that'll suffice for the second means of egress, and then now you have to find a way to get into the in-law from inside the house, without going through the garage.
Okay. Well, like I said, I mean, we have a closet, and we had discussed it, and I'm not, clearly not in that contractor's world, but I think it's something that, you could use it as a doorway to a stairwell to get up there from inside our house.
Okay. Alright, Mr. Blaz, are you on? Is Rich Blaz still on the call?
Yes.
Okay, do you have questions and comments?
None at this time.
Alright. Let me go out to, if people, I'm gonna, let's see, I just want to be able to look at the list of abutters. So if you are an abutter and you wish to speak, Mr. Tully, can you help me here? What do we need to do, are they, because I see they seem to be muted.
Yeah, they should be able to unmute themselves, they're all panelists.
Okay, alright.
There's one attending right now, Maureen Foley, I'm not sure if she's related to this.
She's for the next case.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Char, I'm just gonna call each of the abutters who are present and just see what comments you might have, or questions. Mr. Charles?
Yes, how are you?
Hi, Mr. Charles, do you wish to comment on this application?
I don't have any comments as of yet, just looking at the blueprint, I mean, it might take more understanding in how everything would play out, so at the moment, no comments.
You have the property right next door, sort of at the bottom of the plan, as we're looking at the plan, correct?
That's correct.
And where is the driveway to your property? Is it like right, right at the cul-de-sac, like where I'm?
Yes, right at the cul-de-sac, correct.
Okay. So I'm just, I guess I'll just make a comment here, that the, the variance is because, let me just close this for now. The variance is required because the addition would be very close to your property line, right near the street here. So, you know, you're the one most directly affected by the addition, but it looks like your house is pretty well set back from where the addition to Mr. Arnstein's house- house would be, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Right at the border.
Okay, all right. Uh, so I guess I'll, I'll just ask you, you know, do you, do you feel this is, you know, an imposition on, on your property from what's being proposed?
Yeah, I mean, right now I can't really discuss it at, at the moment, but like I said, I'll have to read my boo, my blueprints to my property, and of course, Mr. Ornstein's blueprint, um, and then probably have to get an accessory to come out to actually map out everything where it needs to be.
Yeah. Is there, is there any, uh, fence along that property line, or anything dividing the two properties?
Uh, it's just trees and shrubs, um, and then we do have a extended driveway that you have to come onto our property, that enters to our garage.
So does your driveway go all like through here, where I'm motioning with my cursor?
Correct, all the way to the street.
Okay. Well, his, I'll just say his, uh, his plan was surveyed by an engineer, so, you know, I, I think we're confident that he's not building, he's not proposing to build the addition on your land. Uh, I was just concerned, and you, you just, you have a driveway there, but it isn't like, you know, your house isn't sitting right next to his house, so that's, that's the point I'm making. All right, let me, uh, let's see, Rosanna Warwick, I'm having trouble pronouncing that for some reason, do, do you have any comments, sir?
No, I have no, no, I have no comments, I just wanted to see what was being proposed.
Okay. Uh, and Mr. Andrews?
Uh, I've already commented, John.
No, uh, Tim, Tim Andrews, oh, is he here for the next case?
Next case.
Next case, okay. So I think Mr. Charles and, and Ms. Warwick are the only two abudders present. Um, let me close that back up, is, uh, how, how do members of the board want to proceed on this? I guess I'll just open it up for, I, I don't want to close the hearing at this point, because we, there's sort of been a bunch of questions raised, uh, I'll just ask any member of the board who wishes to speak to see how we'd like to proceed on this.
Uh, John, this is Maureen Andrews. John?
Yes, go ahead, Wayne.
Uh, the only comment I have is, I, I took a ride down that street a couple days ago and, uh, I, I don't remember exactly where the abudders driveway is, but it's, I remember going down there and thinking there was plenty of room for this addition, and it's like it's, it's, it's all between the two properties. So I, I, I don't see why there would be a problem with it, really, uh, but I never considered, uh, adding the addition to the rear of the existing garage, that's something I hadn't considered. But, uh, I didn't see any, any problem, really, with, uh, adding it where he asked him to have.
And, and I'll add, I'm sorry, Mr. Andrews, are you set?
Yes, I'm all set.
Okay. Um, yeah, I didn't comment myself on this, I, I, I feel okay with this, uh, I, I was a little concerned about, you know, the side variance, but now that I see where the house on the neighboring property is, it really doesn't infringe in any way on, on the house, and I can, in terms of sort of, uh, keeping the house compact and leaving as much of a lot possible for other use, I can see how putting the addition along the side makes more sense than sort of creating an L or something on the back of the house. Um, so I'd be okay with this, with, with the provision that Mr. Curran suggested for requiring access from inside the house, and I would like to see, not see that staircase on the outside of the addition, however, however you want to arrange it in back, or whatever, uh, I, I just think that does detract, that would detract from the appearance of it being a single-family house, that would, that really would make it look like it's going up to a, uh, a second-story apartment, which is, you know, not, not what you want to have. Uh, Mr. Kachetory, Mr. Blaz, Mr. Chandler, any, any further questions or comments?
Uh, this is, uh, Mr. Blaz, just that, uh, I mean, it's the neighbors that are the, really, I won't say the most affected, they're the only ones affected, and I'm listening and waiting for an objection, and unless I hear an objection, I see no reason not to grant the, uh, the request. Or vote for the request.
All right. Uh, Mr. Chandler, anything further?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Gold Rosen, um, no, I think I'm in agreement in what I'm looking at here, uh, I think because of the shape of the lot, it does also create an issue of, I think, you have to put this on. So, I, I think I agree with your statement, and make sure that we can get the, the connection between the interiors.
Yeah.
That's all.
All right. Okay, Mr. Kachetory, anything further? Yeah, we heard that, Jim. Steve, anything? I think that is, I'm not hearing anything, so, uh...
I can hear you, Mr. Gold Rosen.
Okay, Mr. Kachetory, do you have anything further? I, so I'll just ask the applicant, can you, uh, accept, uh, first, the condition that, uh, you provide access from inside the house, and I leave that to you and to Mr. Curran to, to figure that out, and that you not have a staircase on the outside of the addition?
Yes.
And not, I, I mean, on the...
Yeah, on the, not on the side, but maybe in the rear.
None of, yes, right.
Understood, yes, sir.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, so with that, uh, if there's nothing further, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll, uh, proceed to a decision. Uh, I'll entertain a motion from the board. Uh, any member wishes to, to make it?
Mr. Jim. Mr. Jim?
Yes, Mr. Andrews.
I would, uh, I would make, I would make a motion to, uh, approve the variance and the special permit for Wild Turkey Lane, uh, as requested by the applicant, with the, the exception of the, uh, exterior stairs being on the outside, on, on the, uh, outside of the addition.
And with the condition that there be an interior access to the in-law?
Yes, well, I think he actually has that anyway.
Yeah, all right. And, uh, the variance, we can say is due to the shape of a lot, I think, because of the angled property lines.
Yeah, because of the shape of the lot and the, in the present, uh, position of the existing, uh, building.
Mr. Chairman, clarification?
Yes. Yeah, Mr. Blaz?
This, uh, Mr. Curran.
Oh, Mr. Curran.
Yes, question about the second means of egress, and the, is it okay in the back of the existing garage?
If it's okay with you, I think it's okay with us.
So from what I hear, there's going to be an exception that, that the second means of egress from upstairs cannot be off the new addition, however, it can be from the second floor in the back of the garage?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I'll put that in my head.
Okay. All right, uh, is there a second to Mr. Andrews' motion?
Second, Mr. Gold Rosen.
Is that, I'm sorry, was that Mr. Chandler with a second? Okay.
Correct.
All right, I'm going to, any further discussion? All right, I'm going to take a, a roll call vo, vote. Uh, Mr. Kachetory? Mr. Kachetory, can you hear us? I'm gonna close the screen sharing, so I can see everyone here. Did we lose him? I didn't see him on here. Let me just take a look at the list here. All right, I don't see Mr. Kachetory on here, but for the moment, we got four votes, let's see where we go. Uh, Mr. Blaz?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Chandler? Mr. Chandler? How do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, and John Gold Rosen, yes. So we have, we have four votes in favor, uh, Mr. Kachetory has dropped off for whatever reason, but that's sufficient. So the, uh, the application is approved. Uh, thank you, everybody, for, number one, uh, your forbearance in the length of time it took to schedule this hearing, uh, this is, we, we, we had one of these a couple weeks ago, and then went ahead and scheduled this one, and it's certainly not without its flaws, I would much rather be live, but as long as we're here, we're here, and, uh, thank you for, for participating and helping us get through it. Um, and I'll, Mr. Curran, Mr. Ornstein, you can, uh, I, Mr. Ornstein, if you can get in touch with Bob Curran, he can explain where we go from here, there's an appeal period, it'll take us a week or two to get the decision out and so forth.
Sure.
But I, I think we're set with your case, so thank you.
Thank you all.
And thank you, thank you to the, uh, to the, uh, abudders who came and participated as well. Thank you all.
Thank you again.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Hey, John?
So you, yes.
Yes. Bob Curran, um, Steve Kachetory texted me and said he lost his internet connection.
Okay.
So I'm sure he's gonna try to get back on.
Okay, if he gets back on and votes yes, we will add him, we will add him to this, but in any case, it's four votes in favor, so it's approved.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna move on, so, uh, those of you who are here for the first case, you can depart or hang up as you choose, and let me grab the second case. Okay, uh, and I see that, uh, Mr. Keeman is with us now, so we have, uh, five people, but Mr. Andrews, I know you're gonna recuse yourself.
Yes, Mr. Andrews, Chairman, I'd like to recuse myself due to a conflict of interest.
All right, uh, so, one, two, so that leaves us with four, uh, I assume Mr. Kachetory will try to connect, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with the preliminaries, at least, for the, uh, second case, and we'll see if he can get back on, on board. So let me, uh, first of all, I want to bring, I'm gonna bring up the, uh, documents for the, uh, second case. Okay, all right, uh, so this is, uh, case number six, is that correct, Carol?
Yes.
That's it, okay. Location of property, 909 Temple Street, type of district, general business, residence A1, type of structure, existing, owner's name, James Reed, owner's address, 909 Temple Street, when did you acquire this property? 1973. Has application been filed with town clerk? Yes. Has any previous appeal been made? Yes. Sections of bylaw of which relief is requested, section 5, 5-4 F4 variance, and section 7, 7-2 site plan. Reason for asking relief, applicant wishes to maintain a five-space used car display area for online used car business. This case was advertised in the Whitman-Hanson Express on June 25th and July 2nd. Let me just, uh, put this down for a minute here. Okay, um, so I'm just concerned, because at the moment, we have, uh, four people, four members who, uh, can participate, and we normally have five, if we can get Mr. Kachetory back. Carol, do you want to, uh, call him, or, uh, Bob, Bob, you said he texted you, or...
Yeah, he could, I could, I could text him, um...
Because he can phone, you know, he could, he could phone in if he can't, uh, we can...
Get that.
He can come to my house. Uh, is that okay, John?
Yeah.
All right, um, I just text him to ask him to come to my house. He's actually three or four minutes away.
All right. So, uh, and let me just run through who else is here for the case, uh, Ms. Foley, you're the applicant, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and the other people that I see here present, uh, Paul Crowley, are you on the line?
Uh, yes.
Next case.
Um, oh, you're, you're, Mr. Crowley, you're at the, uh, the eight o'clock case, is that correct? The, um, the Park Ave case?
Yes.
Okay, and Tim Andrews, you're here for this case, is that correct, for the, uh, Temple Street case?
I am indeed, and I'll be on, uh, video if I have any questions at the end during the public part, I'm just a bit multitasking, so I'll be here listening.
Okay, that's fine, we don't have to see you.
Excuse me, John?
And, uh, yes?
Um, Steve, Steve has come to my house, I would expect just two more minutes, he'll be here.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, Tina Vassal, uh, are you here? You seem to be muted, there you are, uh, can you, can you hear us?
I'm a neighbor.
Oh, you're, you're with the Park Ave case? Okay.
Well, I'm just a neighbor listening.
Right, right, so we haven't gotten to that case yet, so the only person other than the members of the board who's present for this case is Maureen Foley, am I correct? Did I miss anybody for 909 Temple Street?
Uh, Jim Reed, Jim Reed should be on.
Uh, let's see, let me look at the list of participants here.
He's under Maureen.
Oh, am I, uh, not seeing the whole screen here?
There's two Maureen Foleys.
So there's a second Maureen Foley, is, uh, Mr. Reed, are you on the line somewhere?
Mr. Reed, try to hit, I'm unmuted. I just had a brief conversation with him a few minutes ago, and he was on the other, um, he was listening in on the other case, so I know he's around, let me just text him.
Okay.
Yeah, unmuted it?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll say something and see if they can hear you.
Uh, barely.
We can hear you through the other, Miss, through Maureen Foley.
Yeah, that's okay, I invited him on Google, so that's probably why it shows Maureen Foley.
All right. Yeah, well, Mr. Reed, can you hear us, okay? Yeah, well, Mr. Reed, can you hear us okay?
He must have Comcast as well. All of us do. Horrible thing.
All right, well, uh, Ms. Foley, I guess I'll, I'll, we'll, we'll go, we'll go through this, and, uh, you can relay things to him or from him if we can't, uh, hear him.
Yeah, you know what? Let me, let me just take one second and, um, yeah.
Go, go right ahead, cause we're still waiting for the fifth member, so go ahead.
That's good, that sounds great, thank you. All right. Hi, I'm gonna put you on speakerphone on my phone, and that way you hear them, and through my phone, you'll be able to, they'll be able to hear you. Does that sound fair?
Sounds okay to me. Uh, I'm talking to him, and I guess as long as we don't get feedback or something, so give it a try.
Okay, great. I'm gonna put you on speakerphone, okay? Okay, do you wanna say hello?
Were you able to hear?
All right, we can, we can hear him somewhat. Can, can, Mr. Reed, can you hear us okay?
John?
Uh, yes.
I'm here.
Okay, all right, we have our fifth member.
I just lost everything.
I can come if needed.
Okay.
All right.
All right, let's, uh, let's proceed. In a little, um, so, uh, I read the case, uh, the, um, case information into the record, Mr. Cacciatore. So sitting on the case will be Mr. Keeman, Mr. Cacciatore, Mr. Blaws, Mr. Chandler, and myself, John Goldrosen. Uh, we do have one abada present, but that's all, so I'll entertain a motion to waive the reading of the list of abuddos. Someone like to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
Motion, please.
Moved by Mr. Keeman, seconded by Mr. Cacciatore. Uh, since we're on, online here on Zoom, I'm gonna ask each person, uh, to, to vote yes or no on waiving the, the reading of the list of abuddos. Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
Mr. Cacciatore?
Yes.
Mr. Blaws?
Yes.
Mr. Chandler?
Yes.
And myself, John Goldrosen, yes. So 5-0 to waive the reading of the list of abuddos. And, uh, next step is just, um, Ms. Foley and Mr. Reed and Mr. Andrews. If you will raise your right hand, though I can't see them. Uh, do you solemnly swear to the heavens, you shall given this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, it will be.
I do.
Okay, uh, let me, I'm gonna put up the, whoops, lost it. Let me try it again. Okay, I'm gonna bring the plan up here. Again, sorry for, uh, being sideways. It's probably a way to turn it around, but we'll, we'll, we'll live with it. Uh, Ms. Foley, are you going to, uh, explain, uh, introduce the project and explain what you're going to do?
Yeah, sure. Basically, all I'm doing is I'm going to have an office in, uh, Mr. Reed's building, and I'm going to do an online automobile business. Basically, all it is, is if somebody wants a specialty vehicle, such as, you know, a, uh, 1984 Regal T-type, um, I connect with that customer online. I'll do, um, I'll find the vehicle that they want. We'll do a 360-degree demonstration as far as visibility is concerned for the customer, so he can see what the engine looks like, the outside, the inside, et cetera, and, um, acquire that vehicle after, um, it's shown to him virtually. And so the vehicle will then come to Mr. Reed's lot, uh, where the customer will further inspect it and take delivery.
Okay, so to clarify, the, the cars that would, you've got, uh, you're asking for, it looks like five car spaces, um, for the lot. So would cars be stored there regularly, or would you only bring, bring in a car there in response to a specific customer inquiry?
That's correct. I would only bring a vehicle in there after it's been, um, virtually acquired.
Okay. And, uh, any repair or maintenance facilities on this property?
Mr. Reed has, uh, a mechanic shop there, but, um, basically, the way that I'm gonna be doing it is, uh, that vehicle, in this particular case, these specialty vehicles are 100%. So there's not gonna have to be any work done to them.
Is automobile repair.
I, I didn't hear the, the comments, and I wasn't sure who was making it. It was a background comment?
Background comment, sorry, John.
John, you're not sharing document, documents.
You can't see the documents? You cannot see the doc?
No.
No, let me, I'm gonna, I had it up as screen sharing, let me try it again. Can you see those?
Yeah, there it is.
Okay. Okay.
No, I can't.
All right. All right, let me, let me ask, uh, a few other questions. So there's several buildings on Mr. Reed's property, on what's shown as plot 55 on the plan. So what, what are the other buildings? What are they used for?
Mr. Reed?
Yeah. Yeah, we, I, I can't hear, uh, Ms. Foley, I can't hear what he's saying. I guess I'll ask if you can relay to us what, what he says.
Sure, so, Mr. Reed, one is your house. Right? Hello?
Hello?
Okay, so could you explain what the buildings are again?
Yeah, one of them is my house.
One's your house.
Yep. And the next, the next small one is the house garage.
Next small one is a house garage?
The one behind the house garage is the boat building.
The boat building is behind the house garage?
Yeah, and then the building over to the right, looking at the, looking at the property, that's Reed's Automotive.
Reed's Automotive is to the right.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay. Uh, and the, the other question I'll ask, uh, before we go to members of the board, is the fact that, so both of the, there's plot 55 and plot 55M with, uh, uh, the drive, so the driveway to the, uh, let me just enlarge this here. Okay, the, the driveway to what's shown as the garage sales building, and also the actual site of the spaces for the used cars is on plot 55M. So I, I, and my understanding is that, uh, these, these parcels, Mr. Reed, is it correct, the parcels are held in different ownerships? I mean, maybe one in your name and one is trustee, but they, they are under different ownership, is that correct?
One's a, it's a trust, one is a, um, LLC, I think, and the other is a homestead.
Okay.
Oh, you got it?
Yeah, one's, one's an LLC, one's a trust, and I guess there's a homestead on, on one.
Right.
So, so my only, so my concern is, uh, and, you know, I recognize that effectively it's under Mr. Reed's ownership, and nonetheless, it's in, in different hands, so, you know, conceivably, one parcel could be sold and the other one not sold, and we could have, uh, use of one parcel for the benefit of another. What I'm getting to is there really needs to be some sort of easement or license, or, uh, something, we'll, we'll, we can discuss this, I guess, as we get further down here. Let me get, let members of the board talk about the details here, but if they're satisfied with that, I think there's ways we can, we can handle that. But, uh, it's just something that I think needs to be addressed, to make sure that, um, that the access and the use, uh, doesn't become a conflict down the road. So let me go to, uh, any, anything else, Ms. Foley?
Um, actually, Mr. Reed is speaking. Go ahead, Mr. Reed.
Yes, Reed's Automotive is actually, uh, what, uh, 9/11, the house is 9/11 Temple Street, and Reed's Automotive is 909 Temple Street.
Okay, so Reed's Automotive is 909 Temple, and the house is 9/11.
Yes.
So which is, where we see 55 and 55M? Um,
55M would be another parcel completely, which is under the home match. You can't do anything with that property.
Right, but that's, 55M is where the, you, where the, uh, space for the used cars is shown, is on 55M.
Yes, but you can't.
You can't what?
Change the elevation of it.
You can't change the elevation of it.
Yeah, I, I realize you're limited in what you can do there, because it's, uh, Edison Company easement. But I'm just saying that, uh, you're, you're using parts of each of the two lots, plot 55 and plot 55N, for this used car operation.
You currently park cars there now?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think it's an insurmountable problem, but I think we'll have to put some kind of condition to, you know, it's, it's something to expl, to address that. Um, because it's, it's fine for now, Ms. Foley's operating this, Mr. Reed's, you know, you have, you have some arrangement with Ms. Foley, but if we give a special permit that, uh, and maybe the way to do this is we limit the special permit to the arrangement that the two of you have. Uh, normally, if we don't say anything in the decision, the special permit is forever, and it runs with the land. And so down the road, there could be somebody else operating this used car facility, and the two properties, the two parcels might be sold into different ownership. So that's my concern, is if, uh, maybe the way to resolve it will be to limit the terms of the special permit to, to the two of you and what you're proposing to do right here.
Yeah, that's right.
So I'll just, you know, I'll just throw that out for now, and we can, uh, discuss that. So let me go, uh, let's see, I do have a couple of, uh, letters from town boards that I'll read into the record. First, from the planning board. At the March 10th, 2020 meeting, the board reviewed the plan for 909 Temple Street. The planning board has no recommendation due to the lack of information on the easement. Sincerely, Adam, um, Somerville Vice Chairman. And then I have a letter from the fire department. I am in receipt of the request of proposed car lot at the above address. I have no objection, provided we have adequate access to the property for fire and EMS apparatus. Sincerely, Timothy Grenow, Fire Chief. Um, how wide is the, um, the existing paved drive off of Temple Street, running back to the garage?
If I had to guess, I'd say 15 feet.
You say, uh, 15 feet?
Right.
Okay, that, well, that, that, that would be adequate for a fire department equipment. I believe, I'll, I'll, might as well call right now and Mr. Keeman, a firefighter on the board, uh, for your comments and questions.
Uh, the only question I have was, you're not really storing cars on the lot, so, you know, that's the least of the problems. And as far as the driveway, it's been wide enough over the years, the apparatus, ambulances to get up there, I don't see a problem with that either.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Cacciatore?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm here, and, uh, it's adequate enough for a fire engine to get down there.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Uh, I really don't have a problem, because these, these cars are not stored there. They might land there for 24 hours and off it goes.
All right, um, Mr. Blaws?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, does, um, the existing repair, uh, Reed Automotive, does it also have a used car license?
No.
No.
No, okay, so, uh, very, very good. So I just wanted to make sure of that. Um, do you, is it strictly the machine shop, engine rebuilding, and vehicle repairs?
Oh, vehicle repair is just an engine machine shop.
Just engine and machine shop, okay. No, I, I don't have any other, um, I don't have any other questions. Well, other than, have, have you approached the Board of Selectment about a, um, about the availability of a five-car license?
This is the first step we have to take.
Okay. All right, I, that's all I have, John.
All right, um, Mr. Chandler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Jim, can you, uh, if you can get as close as you can to your microphone, maybe that'll
Let's see if that helps.
Help us. That, I think that sounds better.
Okay, great. All right, um, to be honest, what I'm looking at, the only question I have, and I, you might have addressed this, is where that drive crosses two properties, although I understand they're both owned in some fashion by the same owner, but, um, under different, uh, they're, they're different owners legally. Would, would that be any kind of a problem that maybe they need to address as far as crossing the property line with the two different companies? I don't know if there's any issue, liability, I don't even think that involves us, but I just wanted to make that comment.
Well, that was, uh, what I raised earlier, Mr. Chandler, and, and that's why I think, I think if we limit the special permit to Ms. Foley and Mr. Reed's use, um, so we, it doesn't become a problem if there's, number one, a change in ownership, number two, you know, what's being proposed, this kind of used car operation is very different from, you know, it's sort of a standard, people driving by and driving in, looking at the cars, kind of used car operation. So again, if we just issue a special permit for used car operation with no conditions or restrictions or limitations, it could be something else very different down the road, under different ownership and different arrangements, so. But I, I think, uh, and I'll ask Mr. Curran in a minute for, you know, his perception on this. Um, you know, in, in other cases, not used cars, but other situations where we've had a business on one property using access over another property, we've, we've asked for some sort of formal easement. But that's where there's been clearly two, two different owners. So I'd, I'd be comfortable enough here, in this situation, to, to limit the, you know, the extent of the permission that we're giving and, and not require anything more formal. That's, that's the way I'm looking at it. Um, anything else, Mr. Chandler? Okay.
Yes.
John?
Um, yes, Mr. Blaws?
Does that mean that, from what you, uh, so if we issue, uh, if we say yes, um, and, okay, we'll go on, but can the selectmen, can they, is there a difference in, um, used car license between a virtual, um, used car lot and just a conventional used car lot? Do we have to be the ones saying that it has to be online and make any kind of, or is that something that the selectmen will be able to, um, limit? Um, and I, I, I just don't want to have a situation.
don't want to have a situation that six months from now, there's five cars that are sitting there out there for sale, and they're trying to put up a sign, and well, the, the virtual um, idea didn't work, so now with our five-car license, we're, we're converting to a conventional used car lot.
Yeah. Let me ask Mr. Curran for, you know, his, his comments on this.
Um, Mr. Goldrosen, I think that if you approve her for five cars, then she would have the ability to display five cars. I don't think that's really a concern. As far as the selectmen go, I think she needs a brick and mortar office to display, otherwise you can't get the license, so. Um, and I think that's a state police requirement as well. It has to have a business address.
But I think, I think Ms. Foley might correct. You're proposing to have an office in that building?
Yeah, so in order for it um, to be licensed, the state police require a display area. So, even though there won't be five cars technically at one time, if there were, if there were, it's, they're pre-sold anyway, but um, but that technically fulfills the state requirement that there's a display area.
That, am I correct, you have, you were gonna have at least an office of some sort in that building?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. But I think that addresses it, Mr. Curran.
Yes.
Um, any, anything else, Mr. Curran, from, you know, what, what I've brought up about the, the issue of it being two parcels and different, different ownership or different titles?
No, I think that, I, I think you can, the, the selectmen may have something to say about that, because Frank is, as you know, pretty bright. Um, there may be an issue with them, but I think you should leave that to the selectmen. Uh, as far as two different parcels, I have no issues, but I do um, believe you should restrict this approval the best you can to keep it in these two names.
Okay. All right. Uh, let me go out to, uh, yeah, I'm going to, let's see. So, I believe Mr. Andrews, Tim Andrews is the uh, the only abutter for this case. Uh, Mr. Andrews, do you have any comments or questions on this?
Um, well, I don't know Ms. Foley, but I've been a neighbor and a butter of Mr. Reed for, well, nearly twenty years, and I've had nothing but a good relationship with him. Um, importantly enough, the cars that they're proposing do fit into the theme of Mr. Reed's business, um, and therefore, I'm completely for this. I have no problems whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there anybody else, any other members of the public uh who wish to speak on this matter? I don't think we have anyone else. Okay, uh, anything further from members of the board, uh, or from Ms. Foley before, yes?
Uh, Bob Keeman, is there enough parking spaces on the property for Mr. Reed's business as well as adding five for the used cars, that if she was to change back to a regular used car lot, she would have the adequate parking spaces available?
Um,
Please to.
Mr. Curran, do you, do you want to
Um,
address that? I, I see a number of spaces in front of the garage building that's, I think, listed as customer, yeah, that's customer parking.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I've been by there all times of the day, and there's never a full parking lot, so I don't think that's a concern. Um, I think he's got four, four employees, um, and maybe some of them come to work together, but generally, there's three cars parked there when I drive by.
All right. That satisfy you, Mr. Keeman?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Anything further from members of the board? All right, any, anything else, Ms. Foley?
No, sir.
Okay. So, I'm going to uh, close the public hearing and go into deliberations. Uh, would any member of the board care to, to make a motion on this? So, this is, uh, let me just check here. I think, is there, uh, Mr. Curran, I think there was a, this includes a request for a variance, is that correct?
Yes, because of, because of the zone, Mr. Chairman. Um, this is residence A1 and general business, so in A1 zone, this use is not allowed. However, the existing business operation is not allowed either, so it's pre-existing non-conforming.
Okay. And is this the uh, the zone line here that's dividing?
Yes.
Okay, so.
I gotta plug this in, set to plug it in.
Okay.
Use everything.
All right, so the request is for a variance uh, for the use and um, site plan approval. So, can I uh, hear a motion for that?
No, just, just a table.
Uh, Mr. Andrews, can you mute, Wayne Andrews, uh, we're, we're hearing you talk, so maybe mute yourself for a minute? Okay, uh, members of the board, uh, is there a, a motion on this?
Mr. Chairman, Jim Chandler?
Yep.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve. Um, I don't, I, I don't really see any problem with this. I don't think it will affect anything. I just wanted that clarity on the other item. So, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Should we have a condition that uh, that the approval is for
For the TV.
Ms. Foley and Mr. Reed?
Exactly, yes. Previously, yeah, please.
Okay. Uh, so it'll be limited to uh, an operation by Ms. Foley and Mr. Reed. We won't differentiate between them. Um, is there a second to Mr. Chandler's motion?
I'll second it. Steve Cacciatore.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, I'm gonna take a roll call vote on this then. Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
Mr. Cacciatore?
Yes.
Mr. Blaz?
Yes.
Mr. Chandler?
Yes.
And myself, John Goldrosen. Yes, the vote is five, nothing, and the uh, application is approved. So, as I said, said earlier, thank you for uh, I, I'm sorry for the delay in handling this, uh, but that's the world we're in, and we, as you can see, this isn't the ideal way to do things, but uh, we, we got it done, so, thank, thank you and good luck with it. And I'll leave it to uh, Ms. Foley, I'll leave it to you and Mr. Curran to discuss. I'm, I'm sure you know the procedure that we follow to file decisions in the appeal period and so forth, but you can uh, discuss that with Mr. Curran at another time.
Okay, great. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Close these out. Stop sharing the screen.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, yes.
I have to excuse myself for the next one.
Okay.
I'll make the interest, I work, Mr. Crowley.
Okay, I think, I think we've got five anyway without you, so that's okay. Uh, we have a couple of minutes to go through. Mr. Cacciatore, can you hang around for, for that, or?
Sure, I'm sitting in Bob's house. Why don't I?
Yeah, unless he kicks you, unless he kicks you out, you're okay. All right, let me, uh, yep. I'm sorry, who is that?
This is Wayne Andrews.
Yes, Wayne.
I apologize for talk, trying to talk over you a few minutes ago, but, you know, I've been watching the proceedings, and all of a sudden, I got a pop-up saying my computer was almost, the battery was almost dead. So, I had to move my computer and disrupt my wife, and I had to tell her why I was making her leave. Apologize for, for trying to talk over you, but uh, it won't happen again.
All right. Uh, let me just, I'm gonna get uh, the next case ready on the screen here. Okay, and uh, hopefully, that'll be there when I go back. Okay, I'm going to call the next case to order. Uh, this is uh, let's see. Well, I might as well bring Okay, this is case number eight. Location of prop, is, is, can everybody see the documents on the screen?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, location of property, one eighty-seven Park Avenue, type of district, general residence, type of structure proposed, owner's name, Steven and Leah Samoas, owner's address, one eighty-seven Park Ave. When did you acquire this property? Two thousand and eight. Has application been filed with town clerk? Yes. Has any previous appeal been made? No. Section of bylaw of which relief is requested, section six dash five, six, six dash five, variance slash determination. Reason for asking relief? Applicant wishes to raise, R-A-Z-E, existing single-family home and construct new single-family home. This case was advertised in the Whitman Hansen Express on June twenty-fifth and July second. So, sitting on the case uh, will be Mr. Keeman, Mr. Blaz, Mr. Andrews, Mr. Chandler, and myself, John Goldrosen. And um, let me just, wanna see who is, who is here now. So, uh, in addition to us, uh, Mr. Crowley is here, correct?
Correct.
And Miss Sasso, you, you are here?
I am here.
Okay, and, and you're, you're a neighbor, is that correct?
Yes, I live on White Street.
Okay, and is there anybody else here that I'm, I'm overlooking? Okay, uh, so, Miss Sasso and Miss Crowley, uh, Mr. Crowley, if you would uh, raise your right hand, uh, do you solemnly swear that the evidence you shall give in this matter shall be the truth and the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Uh, all right, um, I'll, given that there's just one person here from the neighborhood, I'll entertain a motion to waive the reading of the list of abutters.
I'll move.
Uh, who made the motion?
Wayne.
Well, Mr. Andrews, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chandler. Uh, so I'll take a roll call. Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Chandler?
Yes.
Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
Mr. Blaz?
Yes.
And myself, John Goldrosen, so five, zero to waive the reading of the list of abutters. So, I have a plan. Um, now this, just to make sure, uh, we sent out documents a few days ago which had a plan in it, and then I received, we received this plan, which is a little bit updated. It shows the driveway on the neighboring property, which I think wasn't on the previous plan. There might be a couple of other changes. Also shows the property in question with a red line around it. So, um, Mr. Crowley, are you presenting the application? Do you want to explain uh, the application to us?
Are you talking to me?
Yes, Mr. Crowley?
Oh, okay, yeah, I didn't hear that. My
Okay, do you want to, I assume, I, I assume you're uh, effectively the applicant, just speaking for the applicant here, is that correct?
Yes, I am, yeah. I acquired the property a couple of weeks ago, and uh, we plan on removing that house with the barn that's in the back and building a new house. Uh, the barn in the back is pretty close to the rear lot line, and the house is to the left of it. They're both in disarray and need to be taken down, and I'd like to put up a, a new, naturally, a new house, a raised ranch, a twenty-eight by forty-four, uh, finished both floors.
Okay. Did I, I thought we had, did we have an existing conditions? No, I guess not.
Yes.
I mean, I can speak, did we?
John, yes, you did. There was the two-sheet original, um, and it showed the exist, that's not it, but it showed the original house,
Yeah.
which was a lot closer to Park Ave.
Yeah, I mean, I can describe that too, because I, I live in the neighborhood. I walk by practically every day. So, the existing house is
Is thirteen
Very close to
Thirteen feet from Park Ave.
Right, and uh, frankly, the existing house and the, uh, you've described it as a barn, I thought it might have been a garage, but they're both in, appear to be in poor shape. Um, and the only thing that keeps it from being an eyesore for the neighborhood, I'll say, is the fact that the lot is very vegetated, so you can't see them very well. Um, but if you look close, there they are, so. Um, and Mr. Curran, if I can just uh, ask you to determine whether this needs a variance or just a determination, the, uh, to what extent will the new house not conform to zoning? Certainly, the area of the lot, but um, in terms of setbacks?
Let's see. I apologize, I don't see the zone on this.
Uh, the zoning, uh, there's minimum setback, the zoning district, general residence, and uh, there's a, down, down at the bottom of the screen.
Right, so the front setback is thirty feet. This is now, it's just twenty-five. The side, side setback is twelve. Um, and I don't see, it looks like this is going to be now a Court Street address.
Yes, that's what it looks like.
So, the, the rear setback is also thirty feet. So, it doesn't meet, um, it meets the side setbacks. Actually, it doesn't meet that. It's right here because it's a corner lot.
Right.
It will, it will have two front setbacks. So, the setback requirement from Park Ave and Court Street is thirty feet in accordance with our bylaws. The other two setbacks would be um, twelve feet.
All right, so.
Right, so this, in my opinion, it's, it looks to me as though it's making the existing, this less non-conforming than what was originally there, because the original house was thirteen feet from the front, the Park Ave property line. So, it's my opinion that a determination is all that's required.
All right, well, I'm okay with going with that then. Okay, um, okay, and uh, sent along this, this picture, this is uh, obviously, not this house, but this is what the uh, the new house would, would look like. Right, Mr. Crowley?
Yeah, that's a fact. I'm going to correct.
Yeah, okay. Um, and uh, do, do you know offhand what the square footage of the, the new house, or at least what the footprint would be? I think you might have said already.
Yeah, the, the uh, the finished square footage is gonna be almost twenty-four hundred square feet.
With the two stories?
Correct.
Right, okay. And uh, no garage for this?
Uh, no, no, no garage.
Okay. And I will note that the uh, this, this version of this new plan shows the distance from the proposed driveway to the next-door neighbor's driveway, and I think it's as, let's see, let's see, sixty-eight feet, I believe, fifty-eight or sixty-eight anyway, more than, more than sufficient for our requirements.
Okay.
Um, okay. Uh, all right, let me, uh, let's see if I have any letters from members from other boards. I don't think we do. Okay, there are no letters from other, uh, other town boards. So, uh, let me entertain questions from members of the board, and then we'll go out to the public. Um, Mr. Keeman?
I have no questions.
Okay. Um, Mr. Cacciatore, no, I'm sorry, you, you recused yourself. Uh, Mr. Chandler?
Uh, one question I have is, I'm familiar with the property I've been in it, and there is a, I don't know, the garage or a barn, there, there's no plan of uh, reestablishing that in any way, I hope.
That, that's gonna be torn down, right, Mr. Crowley, the existing?
Yeah, both, both parcels will be torn down, correct. Yeah, both, both structures will be torn down, correct.
Connection is unstable, you can't hear me.
Hi, Mr. Chandler, I'm having some trouble hearing you again.
So the only structure that will be there if this is approved would be the
The new dwelling.
All right. Yes, I keep getting a unstable internet message, sorry about that.
Uh, we're hearing you fine right now. Good, thank you. Uh, Mr. Andrews?
I have no, uh, questions.
Mr. Blaws?
I wish all of them were this easy.
Uh, and I'll just say to myself, again, uh, having, knowing the neighborhood and the property, uh, you, you, I assume, Mr. Crowley, you're gonna have to probably take down most of the trees that are there, or what, what, what will you be able to keep, have you looked at that, or?
Yeah, I actually had a tree gone down there, and, you know, some of the, naturally, some of the big pines gotta come down, 'cause they're overhanging the house, that new house that'll be there, and all the, uh, all that scrub brush out front will have to come down.
Yeah, um, but as I say, it'll, uh, it's, it's only the existing vegetation that hides what a decrepit property it is right now, so, uh, I, I think, I think this'll be an improvement. Let me go out to, um, members of the public, uh, Miss Fassell, do you, uh, want to speak on this? And can you let us know where, where you live?
Uh, right across the street, 90 Court Street, so I, I get, I get to look at it every day, um, and, uh, you're right, it's, the vegetation is good, except when you're trying to turn out of that street, so, uh, I think we're glad to hear that that's gonna be managed. Um, it's such a small lot, I mean, that looks like a beautiful house, I, I was honestly just shocked you could fit a raised ranch on it. But, uh, anything really is, is welcome, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Uh, anything further from, uh, members of the board? Mr. Crowley, anything further? I, I think we're pretty well said, I'd just, uh, clarify the driveway, what's the, your driveway? Um, is that one car wide, two cars wide?
That'll, that'll be a two-car wide.
Okay, so you actually could probably fit four cars on there and, and, okay, okay. All right, um, and how many, might just look for the record, uh, how many bedrooms will this, this house have?
There'll be three ups, there'll be three upstairs and, uh, one bedroom downstairs with a living room.
Okay.
So four bedrooms.
All right, okay, and will it have a foundation, uh, a basement?
Uh, well, a half fountain with a raised ranch, yeah.
Okay, all right, okay, I'm going to close the public hearing then, and, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, further questions, yes?
Yeah, point of clear, I just say, uh, uh, we didn't hear anything from the Board of Health, is the existing, was the existing house, uh, connected to public sewer?
Uh, no, actually, I, I contacted the Board of Health and I gotta, I got somebody come down to pump it out, and then I have to contact them again, and they'll have to witness when I crush it in, but I have been in contact with them, there is a store up there, so we'll be able to connect the town, so.
All right, so we'll need to, we'll, we'll probably need to make a notation that, uh, subject to Board of Health, um.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes, is that Mr. Curran?
Yes, um, Mr. Chairman, this, um, application for the construction of a new home will need to get signed off by the Board of Health, so you don't need to worry about that.
Okay.
The Board of Health will not allow them to do an inside septic, so they will have to do whatever it takes to dismantle what's existing.
Right, and connect to a public sewer.
Yeah, so you don't need to put that as a condition, I'll make sure that.
Okay.
Excellent.
All right, okay, all right, I will, uh, close the public hearing then, so all that's needed is a determination that the, uh, new structure will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. Can I hear a motion, yes?
Richard, Richard Blaws, uh, so moved.
All right, move by Mr. Blaws, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, I hear Mr. Chandler seconding, uh, any further discussion? All right, I will take a roll call vote, Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
Mr. Chandler?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Blaws?
Yes.
And myself, John Gold Rosen, yes, so the, uh, application is approved. Uh, thank you, Mr. Crowley, and, uh, and Miss Fassell, thank you for your, your input, that, that's good to know that, that you feel this will be an improvement as well. So with that, that cases.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that concludes that case, we do have, uh, just as other businesses aboard, some minutes. I can sign my copies. Uh, let's see. Okay, I found my copies, uh.
Mr. Chairman, this is Bob Curran, um, I'm gonna leave, I'm gonna leave this meeting and Steve Cacciatore had to go home.
Okay, all right, and, uh, just, uh, before you go, Bob, just, uh, Carol O'Brien, do we have any other cases pending at this point?
No, we don't.
Okay.
Um, we've got, um, just so you know, John.
Yep.
The, the approval for, uh, 666 Temple Street, we changed the address of that to 680 Temple Street. Um, they are going to fill out an application come, to come back to the board to change, I believe, two of the six-unit buildings to, um, four-unit buildings. Um, I haven't seen the application yet, but I will be working with the, um, owner of that to fill that application out.
Okay.
So that's on the radar, um, and that's the only thing, that's the only thing I'm aware of that's coming.
All right, so we certainly won't meet till, you know, late August, uh, or even September, depending on, on, on when that gets in.
Yeah, he said he was gonna drop the plans off at my office, I'll help him fill out the forms, um, today, but I didn't see them, so that's coming soon, okay?
Okay, thank you, thank you, Bob.
You guys have a great night.
Thank you, thanks for participating. Okay, I have, uh, at least in front of me, this is the minutes for case number three, this goes back to March, we didn't deal with the minutes at our last live meeting, case number three, David and Sharon Vashon, 9 Pine Haven Drive, and, uh, what was this for, was this an in-law? Yeah, I think this was an in-law, and we had myself, Mr. Andrews, Mr. Chandler, and Mr. Keeman for this one. Can I hear a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
By Mr. Chandler, is there a second?
Second, Wayne.
Second by Mr. Andrews, uh, I will assume, I will assume Mr. Andrews and Mr. Chandler are in favor, Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
And myself, John Gold Rosen, so that's four, zero. Next case was Lisa and Edward Green at, uh, 16 Apollo Road, and, uh, this was for a variance, was for, for the, was it for a garage on the side of their house?
It was more to the rear of their house.
Yeah, to the rear, well, so, yeah, it was a garage, and it was a variance, that they could put that boat, that RV in, or whatever it was. All right, um, same, uh, same people were there for that one, so can I hear a motion to approve? By Mr. Andrews, is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Keeman, is that right?
Correct.
All right, Mr. Chan, Mr. Chandler, you in favor of that?
Yes.
I am too, so that's four, nothing. Uh, case number five, uh, was, uh, in June, the first, the first time we had one of these Zoom meetings, 43 Diane Terrace, and, uh, what was this, this was an addition, I think, yeah, this is an addition, uh, let's see, who was there for that one? Uh, myself, Mr. Blaws, Mr. Andrews, Mr. Chandler, and Mr. Keeman, all of us. Can I hear a motion to approve that?
Um, this is, uh, Richard, uh, move to approve.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Andrew.
That was, Mr. Keeman made the second? I think, uh, Mr. Chandler, do you approve?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Do, okay, and myself, John Gold Rosen, so that's five, oh, and then we have the, uh, general minutes for the, uh, June meeting. Uh, same, same people, uh, were there, uh, can I hear a motion to approve the general minutes?
Motion approved. Yep.
Is that, who made that one, Mr. Chandler?
Yeah, uh, I'll second Richard.
Mr. An, Mr. Blaws second, uh, Mr. Andrews, are you in favor?
Yes.
And Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
And myself, John Gold Rosen, so that's five, five, oh, for that. Uh, anything else from anybody, one thing we, uh, I forgot to put on the agenda, so we can't, we cannot act on it tonight, is the reorganization of the board. So the next time that we have a meeting, Carol, remind me if I forget, we need to put that on the agenda for, for the next meeting, okay? Um, I did get sworn in for another, another term, uh, this evening, just before coming to, just before opening this meeting, so, uh, so I'm up for another five years. We'll see about that.
John, John, did we definitely lose, uh, Sheila?
Yes, uh, I, I don't know this from the selectmen, but I talked to Michael Gansher, and it was his understanding that, uh, she's not in for another, another term, so we've got an opening there.
Okay.
All right, uh, okay, any, I think, uh, okay, if there's nothing else, uh, again, we gotta be formal about the, the motion to adjourn, I, we don't, we don't need a motion, I'll just, uh, take a roll call on this to adjourn. Uh, Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
Mr. Chandler?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Blaws?
Yes.
And myself, John Gold Rosen, yes, so we are adjourned, thank you all for, uh, it, I'll, I'll say it again, this is not my favorite way to do things, but, you know, we, we had a couple of applic, well, one of the applications was fairly new, but two of the applications tonight went all the way back to March, and those people have been waiting a long time, so I'm glad we were able to accommodate them this way, and it went, you know, it went okay, so we'll, we'll go forward and see where it goes from here. So with that, everybody take care, and, uh, we will see you whenever we schedule another meeting. Thank you all. Uh, Tully?
Thank you.
Thank you, so we can, uh, close the meeting at this point.